Thank you. Greetings. Notice was given that this regular meeting of the Mayor and Boulder Board of Aldermen, Alderpersons, for this Thursday, August 9, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the courthouse at City Hall, was given, legally given. We have the agenda. This is a call to order. We're gonna have an invocation led by Councilman Robert Shaw and a pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Marvin Moore. We're gonna stand, we're gonna have a moment of silence first, and then we'll have the invocation.
I have to follow up. We thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight to discuss, Lord, the business of our city. We just pray that you'd be with us tonight as we go through each of the agenda items, Lord. We just give you honor and praise for all that you've blessed us with. And, Lord, we just pray that you would bless this time now, tonight, as we may here together. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge, and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Goldman, can you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
Mayor, all present.
This meeting is now in session. We have a quorum. Announcements. Is Ms. Alela Dismuke in the building? Alyssa, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Alela, I don't know.
Alela, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alyssa. Alyssa, you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, can you come up to the microphone, please? I am so sorry.
It's okay.
How you doing?
I'm good.
Gentlemen of the council and ladies and gentlemen of the audience and those viewing, we have a very outstanding young lady before us, and we're gonna recognize her tonight. First, I want to tell you a little bit about her before we talk about her recognition. Ever since I've known her, since she was born, she's been outstanding even in the cradle. She was chosen a young hero for the state of Louisiana. This summer, she attended Johns Hopkins University for a medical leadership summit, certificate of in adult CPR, hands-on community service with the Red Cross. And we're here tonight because she is ranked number eight in the whole United States- Wow. -in throwing the shot put. And if that's not enough, I mean, I could go on and on and on. So, if we can train the camera over on her, we want the whole world to know who we're recognizing. And can you show off your medal? Is that your medal from the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we have a proclamation certificate of congratulations here from the Office of the Mayor, City of Bastrop. Certificate of congratulation presented to Alyssa Dismuke in recognition of your outstanding performance at the USTA F Hershey National Junior Olympic Track and Field Championships, July 22 through July 30, 2018, in North Carolina, ranking eighth in the nation in the 13 to 14 age group girl shot put, putt event. And I want the chamber, the council to join me in congratulating Alyssa. Congratulations, Miss.
Thank you. I also have something for Parks and Recreation to give. Okay, so, this is a picture. Okay, so, this is a picture of Ms. Evelyn, and she does all the fundraising for us, and she's really there every step of the way for the kids.
And so, I wanted to donate this picture of us and this picture of me at the bottom to
her and Parks and Recreation for being there for us.
Good job.
Thank you.
Evelyn, here. Who's here from Parks and Rec?
Gray. Mr. Here goes Mr. Gray.
Get one with Mom. Mom, you don't want one with him?
Mom, you want to go? Proud mother, good mother, wonderful mother.
Great, great to be up here.
And I want to ask you one more thing before you go.
She's a smart girl, too.
They were respectful.
Well, that's the family.
See, that's part of my family.
I know.
Yes, sir.
Alyssa, where do you plan to go to college?
Johns Hopkins University.
All right.
Baltimore, huh? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda?
We're gonna bring up the raise issue. Yeah, we're gonna bring up that raise issue for employees. We have to put it on the agenda?
Not tonight, Mr. Prater. Mr. Prater asked a question. Are we gonna talk about the raise issue for employees? I'll address that real quick. Is it possible? Well, we don't know. It's not on the agenda, but since Mr. Prater asked a question. As you know, we just came out, we're still involved with the Flying Tiger situation where the city took a big hit on that, about $170,000 last year. And with fuel costs and we had other issues. And now, we have a suit that we discussed last time, that we don't know what the number is, Mr. Prater. It could cost us a lot of money, that the suit, the fireman's suit that we talked about. We're still computing, aren't we, Ms. Goldman?
Sir.
We don't know what that's gonna be, do we?
No, sir.
Right. And Mr. Pierre has been guiding us through that. Is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And we're gonna get this done. We're gonna get this done. So, the point that I'm making is, is that there are costs out there that we don't know what they're gonna be. And that's the whole point. You know, we don't know what these are gonna be, Mr. Prater. So, I just thought I'd answer the question, 'cause Mr. Prater asked it in the microphone, and people heard it, and I don't want people to think that we're running away from the issue. We know that people need raises. We know the last time they've had raises. But right now, you know, we can't make that kind of, and I wouldn't advise us going and amending the agenda to go into that. But we're all sensitive. We want people to have an American standard of living. We want our employees, they do a good job for us. So, that's what I, that's my answer, Mr. Prater, is that there are things that we don't know what the outcomes are gonna be and what the costs are gonna be. So, as soon as we're gonna handle on those, as soon as we reconcile those, then I think we can go forward. I mean, I wouldn't have brought this up, but we discussed it in the last council meeting as an open-ended item, and we've got to deal with it. Any public comments relating to items on the agenda? Item five, approve previous minutes from the regular meeting of July 12, 2018, and a special meeting of July 26, 2018.
Mayor, I make the motion that we accept previous minutes for July 12 and July 26.
It's been moved by Councilman Shaw.
I second that motion.
Seconded by?
I second the motion.
Councilman Locke, that we approve the minutes in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved and adopted. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 18-1784, Bills and Claims for the month of July 2018. Mr. Locke?
Mayor, I move that we accept a report of the Finance Committee Resolution 18-1784, Bills and Claims for the month of July 2018.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke. Seconded by Councilman Shaw that we approve the report. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The report is accepted. Item seven, Revenue Expense Report, June 2018. Mr. Councilman Locke?
Mayor, I've talked to Mrs. Goldman about our revenues and expense. Ms. Goldman, can you give us an update, please?
Yes, that was just a report we didn't have last month. This is ending the year. We're just, it's just reported, no action needs to be taken.
Okay. Eight, Discussion Action, Delinquent Occupation License Report. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is just a report, too, to update from last month. We've had several to come in, but we do have several outstanding that we need to move on.
And we encourage, well, we're gonna-
Yes.
-do everything we can to contact, to contact them. Mr. Richard Patrick is not gonna be able to make it tonight. Item nine.
Right.
Yes. Okay.
Right, we'll make sure it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. That item will be put on next month's agenda. Mr. Maurice Norman, you here? Mr. Maurice Norman wants to discuss adjudicated property and public safety. Do you need a, something to put your, okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Council members?
Good afternoon.
I'd like to touch base on the previous council meetings where we pull all that contract that Civic Source, as it pertains to adjudicated property. And the topic is, where do we go from here? We have, I want to see if we have a plan of action that can make us more relevant than we have been in the past. The reason I say this is because the police jury uses redemptive value to sell their properties, which is basically the tax is owed, as opposed to the formula that Civic Source tried to use, which we all can agree was not gonna work. Right. So, that's pretty much the nucleus of the topic as it pertains to adjudicated properties. I wanted to pose the question in an open forum to the council and the mayor to see had there been any forethought in that regard.
You want me to go first? Does any councilman want to go first? I don't mind. Mr. Norman, I'm glad you asked the question, because we, this mayor and this council, have had discussions on, you know, what we favor during the Civic Source meetings where we discuss Civic Source. Of course, you just stated, and the councilmen, I heard them agree verbally, that the formula, they charge fees, it's a fee base, and the fee on most lots, the smallest lot was like $5,200.
Yes.
You agree with that?
Yes, sir.
And that was not feasible and not probable that we'd ever sell any of those small lots on these, on some of these narrow streets that are only, you know, 15, 16 foot wide-
Yes, sir.
-for that kind of money. But what they guaranteed was a clear title and, you know, title insurance and all the legal stuff. So, we wanted to go in a different direction, because we couldn't clean those lots, because the city would just lose money, because when Civic Source sold a lot, they didn't say, "Oh, city, you just took your mortar over there and, you know, spent $150 to clean it." So, what we want to do, and we talked, Councilman Shaw had mentioned that we've got something, ordinances that favor a lot next door. So, our philosophy is to, in these communities where you've got a dilapidated house, you've got a lot that's grown up, that's got weeds and obnoxious weeds and snakes and roaches and rats and things like that, that the person most probable to clean them up is the person who lives next door to them. So, we want a policy, I want a policy that we would favor the person living next door. Okay? And I think the council would agree that that's our hope, that we would give them a bigger lot and make the quality of their lives much better. Why? Because if you're not willing to pay $5,200 a lot, on a lot, or at least about half that to get a clear title, then, and I've got two attorneys here who can pull my coat if I say anything wrong, then, then you're not gonna be able to go to Bank One or Regions or Chase or anywhere and say, "Hey, I wanna build a $150,000 house on this lot, but I don't have a clear title." So, based upon the fact that if you're not willing to spend $2,000, what can you do with the lot? You can put a mobile home on it yourself. You know, I'm just talking about the options that people would have on a, on a piece of property that you may be afraid that the lot. If one of the council want to weigh in on that, then I welcome you to cut me off at any time. You go ahead, Mayor.
You're doing what you're doing.
Okay, all right. So, so, we want to put those lots that may not have a total clear title, that may, somebody may come up 10, 15 years from now saying, "Hey, that's my land. You didn't do all the pro se verbals on it. I can prove that you didn't serve me three years in a row, and by golly, I'm gonna tie you up in court." The person next door will probably buy that lot to put a shed on it, park a couple of extra cars, or, you know, have a big yard with barbecue pit. Some of our lots are 50 foot wide by 150 foot. When you've got people living 50 foot, 50 foot, 50 foot, it's not enough room to give you space. So, our preference is that first. So, that's, I think that's a philosophy that's shared by most councilmen, I believe, that we want to be able to, people who are in our communities, to be able to enhance their property. So, that's our, that's my first goal, is to put those in the hands of someone, so we won't, the city won't have to take weed eaters over and chainsaws and clean those lots up every two, three years for overgrowth. Okay? And that's our goal. That's our first priority, that's my first priority, anyway, to get these lots that's in question that you're probably talking about. Secondly, if there are investors who want to invest, I think you're an investor in property, correct? And if there's an investor like yourself who want to buy lots, we want to be able to put those lots in investors' hands after the person who lives next door has an option or some kind of way. And we gotta get with our council. We've mentioned this to council before, but we've had so many things in this first year to do until we just have not, you know, this domino hadn't fall, fallen. But it's in the chain of dominos that we're gonna address. Now, you have some comments, then?
Yes.
Go ahead.
In reference to the lot next door, is there a certain period of time that has to go by?
We haven't worked that out yet, but go ahead.
Not finished.
Go ahead.
You've got the individual that lives next to this lot, and you approach them with this-
Okay.
-option.
Okay.
And they just drag on and on, and there's no end in sight as to whether or not they're gonna make their mind up. When does the investor get his say?
Okay. Are you, are you here representing yourself as an investor? I mean, in your interest? Well, this, let me state something. We want to be fair, because we know that most people in Bastrop, we have, we have three census tracts in Bastrop, okay? All three of them are below the poverty level. We apply for opportunities on saying that. I would say that if I go to, if any of these councilmen are aware, and they go and tell somebody, "Hey, Jack, you know, the lot next door to you, you can get," and the city's gonna sell it, and we think it's gonna go for $1,625. Well, I'm gonna be honest, there's a lot of parent, a lot of people who may not be in as good a financial shape as you are. We still want to favor the lot next door person, okay? We want to give them ample time. If they express, "I wanna buy that lot," we want to give them ample time to come up with the money.
But it's-
Okay, that's, that's as far, no, I know it's not open-ended. We're not gonna say we're gonna give you 36 months to come up with $1,600. But our preference is to get that person next door, enhance their life, before we give an investor an opportunity to put a $2,500 trailer on it, okay? And give them some bad neighbors, all right? So, I'm not saying that that's what you would do, but that's what some investors would do, is jam them up with some cheap trailers that are not, and I know that's not your, your operation, but there are people who would do that, would get those lots and make those people's lives miserable. So, my commitment is to the lot next door person first, and we want to give them every opportunity, every opportunity to enhance their lives, and to give them space so that they could control their environment without having an investor who will go and spend $2,500 for a used trailer and come and put it on some stilts and, you know, and charge the daylights out of them, and it costs more to heat them and cool them than the rent. So, I mean, I'm just being honest, that's what happens. When we make property cheap, people who have money go get it and then take advantage, I'm not saying everyone, take advantage of poor people-
That live next door.
-who live next door. And, and our goal is to have this community, a safe community. We think about public safety, and to me, the safest thing is to give these people a chance, a real chance. So, I'm gonna try to make sure we give them a chance, a reasonable chance, okay? And we, we haven't put that in place yet, and I'm glad you asked the question. Go ahead, what's your next one?
Well, the only thing I have left to ask is hypothetically, what if the lot next door is next to an investor?
Well, he's next door.
I just want to make sure I pointed that out.
Yeah. He's next door. Yes, sir.
Sure, we covered that.
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty much all I have to say about the-
We appreciate that.
-adjudicated. And next order of public safety, I'm sure, as you all know, we, it seems like every day you pick up the paper, you're on the news, someone in Bastrop has been vandalized, they've been burglarized, they've been victimized, such as point with Simmons, with Messenger, with Tractor Supply, myself, Councilman Moore, and countless others who, I can't name them all. In my position at Georgia Pacific as an electrical and instrumentation technician, I have tools to, at my disposal, that I use daily that makes my job much more easier to use. One is, we use FLIR technology, which allows us to use infrared cameras to go in and check a multitude of things. Councilman Shaw can relate to this. Just last week, Georgia Pacific, we did a tank inspection, more so to the point, digestive inspection. Typically, it requires people have to come through a 24 to 36 inch opening, bringing in scalping, to have to construct the scalping inside the tank to do their testing, then take it apart, and it's an arduous task. It typically takes five days, one day per tank, and it usually costs us in the area of $60,000. We recently contracted with a company that came in with a drone, did the same task, five hours, $1,500, a $58,000 savings. So, I just pointed that out to go into some of the notes that I've got here. Currently, in the United States, there's over 347 different agencies that uses drone technology for a multitude of things, being law enforcement, first responders, fire departments, and the like. Some of the areas that they utilize these drones are search and rescue, traffic collisions, active shooter scenes, crime analysis, general surveillance, and crowd monitoring. Some of the drone capabilities in the last several years have grown exponentially. You have a situation where, let's just say, had some of the local businesses, if their system goes off in the middle of the night, the drone would be activated, and within a matter of seconds, it could be over that site, surveying the area, providing an additional eye in the sky for that officer, so that you can get a clear consensus of what's going on. These drones are now smart capable, meaning that the minute it's dispatched, the fire chief can view that from his smartphone, from comfort of his home or his office or wherever he may be. So, there won't be any lag time, other than a three to five second delay on YouTube that they currently working to try to get that out of the way. They now have what's called collision avoidance. They have a sensor in the drone that will give it a 15-foot buffer. So, in the event that there was a tree or an obstacle, it would sense that, and it would alter its course, either going around it or going over it. So, that's amazing stuff. You can program drones to have what's called no-fly zones.
May I address you?
Please.
Okay. The last thing we did when we came out of the meeting with the five councilmen, the public meeting across the hall, I met with a company out of New Orleans who handles all the cameras and all the work for Jefferson Parish. Ms. Lenore and I met with them last week. We'd met with them before, and I asked Chief Campbell, "Chief Campbell, I ask you to keep this between us, right? The security talk that we were talking?" Yes. Because I didn't want to get out in the public what we were doing. I didn't want crooks to know either, okay? So, so, we just discussed with a brief introduction of the state that we're in, where we are, I also met with Cox Communication. And tonight, we're gonna expand the agenda to try to approve an AT&amp;T item to get more towers in Bastrop, okay, more bandwidth. I talked with Cox about small cell technology. Cox wants to put more, more towers in, because as Mr. Floyd knows, our IT guy, he's an expert on systems, he's behind the camera, they never is on camera. You wanna stick your head around the camera and let people see you are, Mr. Floyd? We are, we are meeting all the time, but we don't talk about what we're meeting about because we don't want criminals to know every step that we're making. So, we are, you see a little saucer-looking thing on the south end of the city hall now? A little antenna that's, in partnership with LSU, it gives us more high-quality GPS coordinates so that we can entertain driverless cars and drone technology and all this stuff. So, you know, I would not mention the fact that, that I'm working on Bastrop being smart city technology, where we've got all of this stuff. Now, here's the advantage of small cell technology, and I'll try to be brief, 'cause I'm trying to get to the Grambling Southern event at the airport in Monroe, and I'm late.
We are late.
Yes, yes, and I'm trying to get that. But I, since you opened the door, I think that we owe the public some information since the door is open. And I didn't ask you, but I always like it when citizens open the door, citizens concerned rather than them saying, "That crazy mayor wants to do everything. He thinks we should have driverless cars here." Yes, I do want driverless cars tested on our street. Small cell technology puts cell, cell sites throughout the city, and the, we can operate these high-speed cameras, and we can have policemen that's, that might be on light duty. I'm trying to sell Chief Campbell on the idea. If we got a policeman on medical leave, then we can put him in a room and have him monitor these cameras, okay? And at night, 6 o'clock to 6, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, I talked to Chief Campbell about that this, this week. Chief didn't like it, maybe. I don't know whether he liked it or not. I'm just, Chief, forgive me. I play with Chief a lot, you know, I shouldn't do that. But, but to be honest with you, I did talk to Chief and pass on ideas. We've had these kind of discussions. I have them all the time with him. My message to Chief Campbell is, I want the people to have the best, the best chance at public safety that we can have. Now, I don't talk about smart city technology, but I'm trying to get there a step at a time, because people always say, "You're trying to move too fast, you're trying to move too fast." So, yes, we're trying to do all of the things that you talked about. We just met on that, and I showed the council the New Orleans situation, the Jefferson Parish situation, the company. We also have something on here that we're gonna talk about a little bit later. Is there anything else you want to discuss? But we are, we are there, sir. We don't have money, and I'm looking for grants and everything that we can get to get these things happen. But we're talking about all the things that you're talking about. What else do you have?
Well, since you mentioned money, I was gonna basically move on to the use of drones for inspections, so.
Yeah, we, we talked, we had a meeting with the gentleman about GIS, GIS in the whole town. They're gonna fly over and take pictures, hopefully, but, but to not just map that for drones flying over. Yeah, we are into that drone technology, Mr. Norman. I'm not trying to cut you totally short, but we're aware of all that, but go ahead.
The drones that I was speaking of, sir, fly underground.
Okay.
It's the Elio drone. It's encapsulated in a carbon fiber ball, which enables it to- which enables it to fly through sewer mains and water mains, and, and it can boss off the walls.
Let me stop you. That's the reason we were talking to the guy who came here for the last two years. He's mapping, mapping, uh, uh, mapping Tallulah right now Madison Parish, okay? They fly over and they do GIS, and they map all of the sewer mains so that you can fly through the sewer mains. You gotta have map first, you gotta do GIS first, to know how big the mains are, whether it's eight-inch, six-inch, four-inch, or two-inch, and how far you can go. I'm, I'm, uh, sewer systems and all of that. Uh, but trust me, we're there. We're, we're getting there. But we appreciate, let me ask you to do this, because in the sake of time, we've got people sitting out here, and we just don't have time for a thirty-minute presentation.
Well, it was not a thirty-minute. If you'd like, I can go through this funding resources.
Well, well, let me ask you to do this. If you will just give us the information and come back and let, let the council have a chance to, if you'll itemize all of your, 'cause we've got some agenda items, and we've got people that's waiting. And, and, uh, you know, normal a presentation is like two, three minutes.
Yes.
Before the council. I didn't know that you had such an extensive. But, but bring us your ideas, and, uh, we'll be glad to entertain them. But, you know, you gotta get this, you gotta get GIS first before you know how big the, you know, the routes of those things. And that's, we've had, uh, Ms. Lenore, what's the gentleman's name who we've been meeting with? The Asian gentleman? Okay. But we can pull you up, and we'd be glad to invite you to some meetings, uh, Mr. Norman, that we have with these people. We'd be glad to. You know, we don't say to the public, "Hey, we're meeting with people talking about GIS and, uh, mapping every sewer line, every phone line, every, everything," so that, uh, future generations, when they wanna know what's where, you know, we call Dottie. But that's not good enough for what you are talking about. So, I do appreciate your input.
Uh, did you happen to catch the paper today?
Hadn't had time.
Okay.
What's in it?
In December of 2017, there were several individuals that were invited over to the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Department. They've had a drone program for the past two years. It's been phenomenally successful.
I'm aware, I'm aware of that program.
Yes, sir.
But go ahead.
And, uh, basically, if you, I, I need about two minutes, and I'm out of here. The article reads, "The invitation from the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Office was extended to Chief Allen Campbell of the City of Bastrop Police Department. The purpose of the invitation was to share information about Bossier's newly-formed Drone Patrol." And, of course, Chief Whittington, which is the sheriff, he invited these individuals to come over. They've gone through all the preliminaries, they've got the training, they've got ten officers that are dedicated to their program. And, uh, it has phenomenal success in crime reduction, limiting the hazards that the officers face in the line of duty, and increasing public safety. And the individuals, if they don't mind me pointing them out, Chief Campbell, Councilman Moore, Fire Chief Thomas Crowder, Jeremy Defee, and Timothy Williams were all in attendance at that meeting.
What meeting was that?
Yeah, that's what we went over on, the meeting that we talked about. You, you were not there.
They had.
Uh, Mr., yes. Yes, sir, we, we, we paid the expenses to go over there. We signed the checks.
And all, all I wanted to do today, Sheriff, was just express my concerns as a private citizen.
Yes, sir.
You know, want to give some assistance to try to combat the escalating negative connotations that have been synonymous with the City of Bastrop.
Well, uh, Mr. Norman, I think it's because people don't have the right information. They're getting their information from Facebook, rather than getting it from Chief Campbell. Now, Chief Campbell just reported, no, rather than getting it from you, Chief, 'cause Chief Campbell just reported on progress in crime. You see, every time Chief Campbell comes in and tells me, "Uh, we found a four-wheeler, we found this, we found that, we arrested, uh, three juveniles, we arrested four juveniles, we got one that goes..." You know, the public doesn't have, is not privy to that. All the public's privy to is what goes on in the newspaper, basically, and the negative stories that the TV stations come up here and give us. And also, what they learn on, what they learn on Facebook that's not true. So, we can't do anything about all of that stuff on Facebook because it's like Mark Twain says, it's not that they don't know enough, it's just what they know ain't necessarily true. So, that stuff is not true. We have an effective police department. They are doing a better job than the public gives them credit for. And let me state something about the businesses that you named. You named Simmons and, and Messenger and, and Tractor Supply and your business. Um, I, I was in Mr. Moore's business. I was in a meeting with Chief Campbell, asked him to go to an apartment complex with me. And I was so proud of our chief because he told them, "Look, you've got to do your part, okay? We're gonna do our part." But he laid out what they needed to do. Now, at one of the meetings with one of these, uh, businesses, I stated that I want a comprehensive program, okay? I don't want finger-pointing. I want comprehensive programs where, between the Sheriff's Department, the Bastrop City Police Department, where we work together, okay? And also, we work together with the businesspeople and the homeowners. Now, that's what we've been doing. Now, anyone who, we want comprehensive. That's with our camera program, our surveillance program, and we're not gonna tell crooks wherever a camera is. We're not gonna tell them about infrared technology. We're not gonna tell them about, we can detect when, we're gonna be able to detect when two cars go down the street, or cars go in and out of a street and, and stop at a place for thirty-eight seconds or forty-two seconds. We're not gonna tell them what we're doing. We're not gonna telegraph that, Mr. Norman. So, uh, I asked Chief to keep things between us and keep things kinda secret that we're trying to do. And we can't get on Facebook and say, "Oh, there'll be a camera at, uh, at, uh, at the corner of such and such and such and such." Or, "There'll be infrared here, or there'll be drone there." We can't talk about that. So, uh, all I can do is ask people to, to, um, not believe what they see on Facebook from people who might have a couple of people, low-level people, and I don't mean low-level in this disrespectful, but I mean people, there are people in city hall who call some of these people and send them things and tell them things, but they're not at the decision-making level, and they don't know what's going on. They think they do, but they don't, they're speculating. That's a fact, okay? We know that there are, are people that, that, you know, might not like us. We accept that. And they talk, and they love to talk. But we're going, we're going full speed ahead. And as I talk with Chief Campbell, I say, "Chief Campbell, I want the best chance at public safety." Uh, we had a mosquito workshop that we spent three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for this, this past week. You know why? Because that's public safety. If somebody gets bit by a mosquito that has Zika virus or West Nile, they might die. And we had fifteen people all day long at the Learning Center. Um, uh, Councilman Shaw went by and spent an hour and a half, okay? And we learned, our people were educating even the weed eaters to be able to detect, uh, uh, mosquito breeding areas. And, and we are now gonna, first time Bastrop's ever had a comprehensive mosquito. That's public safety. We're a public safety administration, and we're not laying down on law enforcement. Chief Campbell's hired probably three policemen in the last sixty, sixty or ninety days, is that correct, Chief?
At least thirty, forty-five, maybe.
At least forty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but we don't go to the newspaper every time we hire a new policeman. Uh, we don't do that, but people still say Bastrop doesn't have any police, the mayor won't let them hire anybody. That's a lie, okay? We're looking for policemen.
Yes.
Wonderful, good job.
Yeah.
Okay, any, is there anything else?
I appreciate the fact.
We appreciate you coming, because we want to bring these things up, and we always love it when a citizen bring them up.
Well, I like the fact that, uh, Chief Campbell spoke with these residents and telling them that they need to do their part, because I think it kinda falls into the heading of what I'm doing here, doing my part.
Yeah, well, no, I'm saying, I appreciate you, sir. I'm glad, I'm glad that I don't have to come to the city and bring these issues up. So, I'm applauding you for bringing them. You always do a great job, you're a great researcher. You do, you, you're a marvelous researcher, you're a brilliant man. I'm not being disrespectful, Mr. Norman. I'm respecting you, sir, I respect your intellect. I respect the fact, but, but you're coming at us in a council meeting without really knowing what we are doing, and that's, that's a good thing. We, we, we are aware of smart technology, we're aware of the drone technology, we're aware of these things, we go to workshops and stuff all the time. Your son's in high-tech, and he keeps up with everything. He's a expert in his field, in cybersecurity and all of that. I respect that, and you know I always welcome your input, don't I?
Yes.
We talk for hours on end, don't we? Okay, so, please don't take it disrespectful. I just got people out there who are waiting.
I understand.
And we are supposed to limit these presentations unless we are prepared for them to, like, three minutes or so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm not trying to get rid of you. I want your input.
If you'd have divided the time in half of when I spoke and you spoke, I'd already be sitting down.
Well, that, and, 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 and people would, and people would look at this, thank you, people would look at this on YouTube and think we're a bunch of dummies and we're not doing anything. But that's my opinion, you got your right to yours.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, because I'm always gonna tell you what our position is. Uh, next item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Yes, sir.
Um, appoint, item eleven, appoint member to the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Ms. Janet McLean here?
Yes.
Ms. McLean, would you come up? We lost a person on the zoning committee, didn't we, Mrs. Goman?
Yes, sir.
And we, whoa, when I say lost, you know. Uh, we, we had a person leave the area, I believe. And, uh, I believe Ms. McLean's in your district, Councilman? Yes. And I'm offering Ms. McLean to fill that appointment, and I would like to, to, uh, to appoint her to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Seconding.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, and seconded by, seconded by?
Prater.
Prater, Councilman Prater. I think there was a tie between Councilman Prater and Locke, and I just want to be clear. Uh, Councilman Prater, that the, that we appoint Ms. McLean in the discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed?
Could you tell me her full name?
Yes, ma'am. Can you pronounce your full name and?
Yes, Janet Butcher McLean.
And that's two Cs, right? M, small c, and then capital C.
Correct.
L, A, I, N, correct?
Correct.
Ms. McLean, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering me, Mayor and Council. I will serve to the best of my ability.
Ms. McLean, I've known you since you were Janet Butcher, only. And, uh, you, you Butcher sisters were always smart, brilliant, young people. And, uh, and we're glad to have you, uh, be willing to serve on this all-important, um, commission. Is there anything you'd like to say to the council, other than what you said?
I'd just like to thank the council for your vote of confidence and assure you that I will do my very best to serve this board, and I appreciate the appointment.
Okay, didn't we vote yet? We didn't vote, did we vote?
Yeah, we all.
Okay, good. That went so fast. Thank you, Ms. McLean.
You have a good one.
Okay, thank you, I didn't want to miss that. I missed a voter too before, Robert. Twelve, resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy-eight. A resolution? Okay. Okay, a resolution of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, the city, to authorize the mayor to sign a franchise contract with MetLife EMS Incorporated to operate as a provider, um, emergency medical transportation, uh, ambulance, that's an ambulance service, within the corporate limits of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, and to provide otherwise with respect thereto. Mr. Pierre, can you lead us in this discussion, sir?
Uh, gladly, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to do so. I think at the last council meeting, uh, there were some brief discussions with respect, uh, to MetLife's contract. Uh, as you all may recall, the initial terms and conditions of the contract provided that the contract, uh, began in June the twenty-ninth of the year of two thousand through June the twenty-eighth of two thousand and four, with two successive two-year extension periods. However, uh, uh, after the two thousand and four year, there have been some extensions that went beyond the traditional terms and conditions of the contract, and we found that, uh, that contract was no longer in effect, and this body requested that we get a new contract in place. Mr. Parker and I have been, uh, he's here today. We have been, uh, uh, conversing with respect to that new contract. And the most recent, uh, revision of the contract, we spoke about it momentarily, uh, a few moments ago. Things gonna be in compliance with what the council wants. Uh, I think that was a new, that was, that was a proposal that was submitted to us. And the only issue that we had with that proposal was the term, i.e. how long that contract would last. Uh, I've had some discussions with him. He's in agreement with us with respect to the council's wishes for a five-year contract, and we'll be back in today.
Mr. Parker, you want to say anything, sir? Please come up.
No, really, I just wanted to get, to get that contract done.
I think we're there.
I appreciate Ms. Lenore and all of them that I've been working with. Y'all have been real good, and, and, uh, I've talked to your council and if things, good on my end.
You're good with what he talked about? Okay. Well, uh, if you want to make a petition with these gentlemen to vote, 'cause they control it, I can't vote, uh, Mr. Parker.
I'd like for them to vote.
You'd like for them to vote, okay. Without further ado, without further ado, resolution, do we have a motion to give the mayor, um, uh, the authority to sign the contract? Is that what the motion is?
The, the resolution specifically is authorizing you to contract with MetLife. Specific terms of the contract are gonna be, as we discussed in three council meetings. I'm, I'm, the version that you all have in your packet is not the final.
Right, right, right.
We need to revisit it.
The change, the change in, the only change in the contract is gonna be the term of the contract.
Right.
You can go ahead and approve this.
You're only voting to approve the mayor to sign the contract, Mr. Parker and I.
With the revisions.
Probably no later than tomorrow, we'll have the revision in that you will decide which is gonna be a five-year term.
I make that motion, Mayor. I second it.
Oh, boy. Mr. Parker, you're a very popular man here today.
Thank y'all very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Moore, and seconded by? Green.
Green, it doesn't matter.
It don't matter.
Okay, by Councilman Green, by Councilman Green, that we, that you, that we approve this resolution, eighteen dash, um, seventeen seventy-eight. Uh, in the discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll see you tomorrow or Monday, whenever you want to, okay? We're at your disposal. And congratulations. And, Mr. Parker, we do appreciate the service that you offer, life-saving service. Sometimes you're the only, a lot of times you're the only, uh, you know, link between what could be worse.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, we appreciate your service. Uh, item thirteen, resolution eighteen dash seventeen ninety-two, a resolution of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to enter into a computer software service agreement for the August tenth, uh, twenty eighteen through August ninth, uh, twenty nineteen with Onserve Incorporated to provide other matters in connection with their rent. Do we have Ms. State Pinnell in the office? Uh, and if, Mr. Pinnell, can you, and we have another friend from, are, are you here tonight? That brought this?
Ms. Jordan, I don't see her.
Ms. Jordan, is she here?
I don't see her.
I think she may have left.
Hmm.
Okay. All right. Ms. Pinnell, can you come up to the microphone? Uh, do you remember Ms. that, that was here, that's got the daycare? I don't want to mispronounce it.
Lois Jordan.
Hmm?
Lois Jordan.
Ms. Lois Jordan, because last time I called her something, I didn't say Lois.
Okay.
Jordan. And I don't want to make a mistake on people's names. But Ms. Jordan came up and said that, that we had an active shooter situation, and, uh, she has a daycare center, and she felt really bad that we didn't have. And we talked before about an app that would, that we could blast and, 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 uh, notify, thank you for the work, notify people in the area that there was a situation. And I felt passionate about that and proposed it, and it failed, and, and I want to thank Ms. Jordan. That's why I always like for citizens like Mr. Norman and Ms. Jordan to come up and raise issues, so we can talk about them without it being one of us coming, bringing. We want people to know that they're concerned. And, Ms. Pinnell, you got up and said that you supported that financially. And we do appreciate that. You were willing to give a donation, because there was a discussion about cost, and you promised, I think, twelve hundred dollars?
I did.
Twelve hundred toward that. Are you still willing to do that?
I am.
Okay. Now, the first section, uh, Onserve is the largest provider of this kind of service in the country, and if you want to look up there, go to their website, and they have what's called Code Red. Their software is so phenomenal, the chief of police, if he sees, if he is aware of a, a situation in a community, then he can take his cellphone out and, and go to the app and enter his code. Of course, his code will be programmed in his phone, and he can triangulate an area. He can make it any kind of way he want and say, "Contact everybody in that area," and everybody in that area will get a notice saying, "Active shooter," or "Train wreck, train spill," or something, "Stay away from this place, stay away from that place." So, that's the kind of thing that Mr. Norman is talking about, and that's why I appreciate citizens like Mr. Norman, Mr. Maurice Norman, and you, and, and, uh, Ms.?
Ms. Jordan.
Jordan. Okay. Uh, so, thank you so much, and that's coming from the Moore House?
Community Medical Center.
Community Medical Center. Great corporate citizens. We love great corporate citizens because great corporate citizens support the community, and that's what Moore House Community does, and we want to thank you. Now, the first, the first section of this, we just got the app version, and we've got a limited number of text messages that we can send. A lot of elderly people don't have these kind of devices, you know? Most of us walk around with two or three of them. And since they don't, we did, we do have where we can notify them by phone through the system. So, the system will instantly let them know, ring the phone saying, you know, uh, situation, whatever the situation is, uh, and we can let people know there's a lockdown here, there's lockdown there, whatever. Um, but a lot of people, elderly people particularly, don't have cellphones and don't have, uh, smartphones. So, they, but they still got their two-eight-one or two-eight-three number. So, we're gonna program a limited number of them in. Now, the next step of the, next step of the software, I, I wanted to get it implemented. The first step costs fifteen hundred dollars. We were able to, I hope the company doesn't look at this video, but we were able to get them down, okay? And then the next, the next step is, uh, is about twenty-eight hundred dollars, which we're gonna go to second. So, what you're approving tonight is us having the, the authority to, and Ms. Ms. Pinnell's group is covering twelve hundred of that, and it's peanuts to pay for the kind of, of, uh, of, um, protection and warning, you know, initial warning to our citizens. We owe it to our citizens to do that. Um, anything else you want to say, Ms. Pinnell?
It's...
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And thanks for joining us for lunch yesterday.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, do, do we have a, yes, sir, Mr. Parker?
You can put a better note down for the fifteen hundred?
Oh, my goodness.
We did fifteen hundred.
Oh, my goodness. That covers all but a hundred dollars.
I think that's all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And, uh, we think the citizens will love it.
You make a motion, come up with the other hundred.
You make a motion what?
You come up with the other hundred.
We'll, we'll go ahead and do the other hundred. We'll do, we'll do thirteen hundred.
What is that?
We'll do thirteen hundred.
You'll do thirteen hundred?
Thirteen hundred.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. And Ms. Ms.?
Motion accepted.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilman Shaw. Second, seconded by Councilman, um, uh, Locke.
You got it, indeed.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. It's been seconded by Councilman Locke, uh, but motion by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we, that you give the mayor the authorization to subscribe to this service, and in case the public wants to know, go to Code Red. Just do Code Red on your deal, and you'll see they got more cities than anybody in the country. They're the largest in the world at what they do, and they got everything on map, and they've been, I felt so confident, I felt so confident in, uh, in, uh, their service. All, into discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the, uh, the motions.
Thank you.
I mean, the resolution adopted. What is this, fourteen? Okay. Item fourteen, resolution eighteen, thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms.?
Pinnell.
Pinnell. And thank you, Mr. Parker. It's a pleasure, sir. Thank you. Um, eighteen dash seventeen ninety-three, a resolution of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to retain and re-engage the professional services of the Pruitt Group, uh, limited, uh, to perform other, all other reasonable and necessary acts thereto, Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, this is our, um, grant man out in Washington, Steve, Mr. Steve Pruitt's been with us probably twenty-four years. It's time for his contract to be renewed. He really works with us to get any kind of federal money. Airport, we got a couple of technology grants.
Yes, pass out.
Three million, maybe, but anyway, if y'all would like to renew this contract, we ask that you consider this, uh, resolution.
Mr. Pruitt, the, the Washington landscape has changed, and we need eyes and ears in Washington. And I would recommend this, that we approve this. Mr. Pruitt's in constant contact with us. He lets us know when, uh, when a bill, you got something? Okay. When a bill, when, when, when appropriation's made, uh, we were on it with the Opportunity Zone, we were on it with, uh, the Federal Aviation, uh, Mr. Lenore and myself and Ms. Goldman, and, uh, with the help of some others, we just submitted, uh, what you gave us approval to do, apply for the twenty-eighteen appropriation for airports. We asked for a fourteen and a half million dollar runway extension of nine, fourteen hundred ninety-eight feet, and we also asked for, uh, one point six million dollars to build hangars. We're the only airport in the area that doesn't, that hadn't built a hangar in fifty years, and we don't have any hangar space at our airport. We can't accommodate the, uh, the new companies coming in to take Flying Tigers' place, hopefully. Uh, they can't take off from our four thousand and two-foot runway, fully loaded. So, we could have business jets in here if we get this extension, and we have normal airport appropriations to the tune of about a hundred fifty thousand a year, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
And we'd never accumulate, because those always go to, uh, safety issues like, uh, obstruction removal. When the trees grow too tall and get in the glide path of, of, of one of our approaches, then we gotta spend that money to cut trees down, and then it's time to repave the runway, and we'd never get around to those things. But the Trump administration passed a billion-dollar, a billion-dollar appropriation, called a supplemental appropriation, and we weren't even on the list of airports, but, but we, uh, knew that we needed to get our head and, throw our head in the ring. If we didn't throw our head in the ring, we'd never get anything. So, I want to thank Mr. Lenore, who pushed me tirelessly to, uh, get that finished with Ms. Goldman and, and Ms. Lenore and myself, and Ms., and the rest of our administrative staff. Um, so, we wrote the, and we submitted it yesterday, was the deadline. We got it in, in coordinating with, uh, Denman Engineering and our airport manager, Mr. Elton, and, uh, and our state, our state representative, Ms. Heidi Hickembottom, and Ms. Naomi, our Federal Aviation Coordinator, our Program Manager out in Fort Worth, and I could go on and on, but we, we, we got that done. So, this, um, Steve is an asset, and we could miss his pay, and one deal that we missed, we could, you know, we could miss out big, and we need some eyes and ears. So, what is your pleasure on eighteen dash seventeen ninety-three?
I make that motion, Mayor.
And I second it, Mayor.
Make, motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore and seconded by, uh, Finance Committee's Chair and, and Councilman, um, Locke. Thank you, Mr. Locke, uh, to adopt this resolution. Into discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, I need to, I need a motion to extend the agenda just for an item. Um, we have an opportunity with, did we do the AT&T? We didn't do that, right? Uh, we need to expand the agenda to discuss a matter. We have an opportunity to maybe, uh, get a tower located on our, on some of our land that the City of Bastrop owns. It'll generate revenue to the tune of about seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, and that would be a perpetual contract for ninety years, and we'd get an increase every year. And, uh, it would also do what Mr. Norman's talking about, give us extra bandwidth so we can operate cameras and all kind of, and fly drones, Mr. Norman, fly drones. And we want more of that information from him, Mr. Norman.
I make that motion, Mayor.
And I second it, Mayor.
Motion to expand the agenda's been made by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we expand the agenda. Into discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Pratt? I mean, Mr.?
Prater.
Prater. Mr. Shaw, Mr. Green, and Mr. Locke.
I, I, I take it that a present means, yes, we can expand, right? That's a yes vote?
Shake your head, yeah.
Okay, yes, okay. So, we need all five councilmen to, to do that. We can't expand the agenda without, uh, all councilmen agreeing. Um, um, so, um, to expand the agenda now, Mr. Mr., we have a representative from, that we've been talking with from AT&T, and I didn't know he had a relative so close to us. Yes, we've talked about this, but...
Do we know the relative?
What'd you say, Mr.?
Do we know the relative?
I think he's one of you guys, and I want the one who's a relative of this gentleman to speak up now.
It's me. But I, but I...
Stephane.
Yes.
Yeah, Stephane.
Yes, Mr. Shaw's grandson is, works for AT&T, and one of the towers that we're talking about, I want, I want the authorization to talk to, now, this is not the end of contract. They have to have the three open area where this tower will go. One just happens to fall on our land, and I would be remiss if I didn't try to get the revenue for the City of Bastrop, so we can compete for, uh, this tower, this tower location. They build a tower, and they cover all the expenses of doing everything associated with this, and pay us, how much was it, nine thousand a year, roughly? Mr. Locke, you calculated? Yeah. And, um, and we would be enhancing the bandwidth in Bastrop, and it would be to serve, where AT&T has a, a less than perfect signal in a lot of parts of town, space estates in that area. And, uh, and also, I would like permission to continue talking with Cox Communication about possibilities, not a contract, but to enter and to, and to be able to give them letters saying that we're interested, and that's, uh, they need this information by Tuesday. That's why we could not do. So, I'm asking permission to talk with Cox about small, small cell technology. Uh, they want to put towers in a lot of places, and we want the extended bandwidth and capacity here in Bastrop. Uh, and, uh, so, I'd like to have permission to talk with them and give a letter. I, my intent is to write a letter to Mr. Shaw's grandson, saying that the City of Bastrop is interested, and, and you considering AT&T, considering this property. I want to be clear, that's all, Mr. Green. That's all. Just want transparency. To be, so, that's all. We're not entering the contract. That's gonna come back later, hopefully, if they consider our, some land that we got. You made the motion, Mr. Green?
I did.
Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Green.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Uh, into discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's good ethics, Robert.
Gotta do it.
Yes, gotta do it. Uh, that's Robert's grandson, who is the salesman that we, that we are talking with, the, uh, no, the account representative that we're talking with, with, uh, with AT&T. And, uh, is that it?
It.